Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this ninth day of October 2023. On this Columbus Day, I'd like to welcome our guests and get right into tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda would be consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held September 25th of 2023. Okay, council, we have a first and a second. Motion was to waive the reading. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented in your packet? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment, Amy. Okay, council, the first item on the agenda tonight is the Appalachian State LLC presentation by its founding member Phil Cornet. Phil, at this time, I'd like to welcome you to the podium and kind of give us an overview of your company. And then, of course, the next item on the agenda is discussion and approval of a promissory note for you all if the city so chooses to do so. So if you just kind of want to take the podium and I presented, I gave council in their packet the PowerPoint that you used, and so you can highlight that. The floor is yours.
Thank you, gentlemen. Again, my name is Phil Cornet. I'm one of the founding members of the West Virginia Great Barrel Company, one of the four original founders, and also Appalachian Stave, which is our new side of the business that handles timber, staves and stave production. In your PowerPoint, there is a... After page eight, which is page nine, there's a chart like this that kind of describes the entities when you dig down or look into the barrel company, as we commonly refer to it. It was originally set up as a single LLC, the West Virginia Great Barrel Company. In our original capital formation, we did a new market tax credit program funding. I don't recommend anybody do that. They'll waste more of your time than you can imagine. But to do that, we had to create a separate entity and move the assets and to a holding company. So we took all the members of the barrel company and said, did another company called West Virginia Real Estate Holding Company, and that holds the land improvements equipment at the cooperage that's in White Sulfur Springs. That's the plant where we take all the products that the mills make and bring them together to actually make a barrel in the end. And so the ownership of both those companies is exactly the same, save one person, and that's Tony Alexander's wife, who wasn't an original investor. We made her an investor in that other one, and the lawyers said that was good enough. And so they had two separate entities, and it passed for new market tax credit funding. That's why those are there. Barrel Company is the operating company. It owns 45% of real estate by itself. As we grew, and we started in 2016 as a result of the flood that we had in White Sulfur and the surrounding areas here. You all are aware of that. To create, there was a need after some of my partners had built a bunch of homes down in White Sulfur that we had to build some economic development where people just wouldn't stay. And so at that time, Smooth Ambler, it's a small distillery in Lewisburg, had just been sold to Pernod Ricard, the second largest producer of hooch in the world. And they were celebrating, and they said, we ran into them, and they said, "Good news is, we sold 75% of the company. Bad news is, we have to quadruple our output and quit selling gin and vodka." So, and they can't buy a barrel, couldn't get a barrel. And so Tom looked at me, and I looked at him. He said, "We could do that." And so we started working on it in 2016. In 2019, 2019, we actually started continuous production in the plant of barrels, right in the middle of COVID, you know? But we had some customers, Jack Daniels, smaller distilleries, Smooth Ambler, Southern Distilling down in North Carolina. So we had some key small customers that kept us going through the early days. So the first couple of years, we showed losses and losses and losses the first two or three years to start a business, and our shareholders just kept reinvesting and keeping the company going until last September. It was our first month. We went positive, and we haven't had a negative month since. So right now, the company runs about $6 to $8 million a month in top line and about $1.5 million and a half to 1.8 in bottom line. As demand comes in and grows, you have to have, to sell barrel today, you had to have cut that tree down nine months ago and convert it to a stave and then let it set out and air dry. So all the harsh elements and the wood get kind of leached out by the rain, the sun, the wind, the natural elements. That's the best practice in making a barrel. So if your sales kind of gradually grow, you can self-fund that. But when your sales do this, you can't. So we decided to set up, move our mill operations in Appalachian Stave in case we needed to raise more money down the road for that. When we started this business, there were dozens of independent stave mills out in the world. Over the last couple of years, they've all gotten bought up or consolidated with other cooperages or other mill companies. So we had originally built our own, our first mill was our own. Then we decided we had to continue on that path. So we built our second mill in Boone County. It went into operation in January of this year with the Hamer family down there. Then we started working on another site. I had been working on for about a year down in North Carolina. And then one of our law buyers said, "There's a site up in Cowan. You need to come see it." And that's how we got introduced to this area. And got introduced to Tom Cogburn and his family, and they're our landlords there and a really great strategic partner. We're going to help them, and they're going to help us. So that's kind of how we got here on a top-line basis. You've all had a chance to read this. Do you have any questions you'd like me to answer straight out or to start with? Okay, well, let me jump to the way it is today. Right now, this year, the Barrel Company will produce over 188,000 barrels this year. And next year, we're scheduled to hit 238,000. That takes a lot of work. And so one of the things we're blessed with here in this region...
What would you say it was for next year, Phil?
238.
Now, when you say that, are you saying that in 2023, you'll produce 188?
Yes.
And then in 2024, you're projected to produce 238?
I think we have some of that information back here in the stack.
Beyond the goes is 275, I think.
Right.
Going forward, 175.
And to that point, all those people in the green shaded area, Sazarak's the first one. Sazarak owns Buffalo Trains, Pappy, and a lot of other well-known brands. Their family out of New Orleans, they have their own cooperage in East Bernstadt that they went in and partnered with the Robinson Brothers and did. But they're our largest customer on top of that. So they contracted with us to, and gave us 10% down on the contract amount to lock in that barrel commitment that we would give them. And it's a cost-plus-contract. So we don't know what the price is going to be when they buy it. Every one of those people have backup orders on top of this that are equal to that amount or more. I just don't know how we get there. Two shifts is going to be maybe next year for us at the cooperage. I don't know. Three shifts is suicide. You don't have time to maintenance, you know, you're tearing your equipment up, you know, you just... And that's not why we got in the business. So we do many best barrels in the country. The market has responded to that. We get the most, we get the highest-priced barrel in the market of any of our competitors. And it's important that... It's been great that we've been able to continue to develop this business in the state of West Virginia. As I mentioned earlier, I was in North Carolina. We have a site down there. We had a site down there. And we came up here and loved the site, loved the people. Got a water line in the road right down there in front of us, you know, got power, got a transformer up on the hill. I was excited. And then we ran the pressure test. So we had the pressure, but no issues left. And for us, not being able to fire suppress our mills is an absolute no-go. The very first mill we bought down in Monroe County, that looked like they'd been put together with Band-Aids and Boba gum, was a sawmill, and we built the stave mill right next to it. Well, one Monday, one Monday morning, about 2:00 in the morning, I get a call from the manager, and the damn mill's on fire. And they had a high-pressure sodium light in that building inside, under a roof with wooden frames that just burst and caused the place on fire. We saved the stave mill, but we had lost some. So we immediately went and got busy, and we had to do the same thing in Monroe County. We're on the low end of their water line, so we get good flow, get good pressure. But that night, we've outdrained their water tank. So we can't do that. So when we met up here on the site and state people were here, I know that they're excited about putting the tank up on the hill and that kind of thing. If they can find the money, that would be good. We could do that. But to be in operation, we had to have a pretty good indication that we could find some extra funds to support putting a massive diesel pump sitting in the middle of that pond down there and make sure there's enough water in that pond. And there we are. We have certified. You might have got a copy of that.
I did. They've got it. They've got it.
So it takes about 67,000 gallons to satisfy a fire event for that many square feet, and we've got over 200. That's good. That'll work. And I know Tom's excited. I know other economic development people are excited about it. They see it as a added incentive for other businesses to come on to that site and set up site up there. That's not why I'm here. I'm here about our business here, and we're excited about being here. We opened up the log yard in April, I think, this year, 1st of April. We've been buying, we've bought millions of dollars of logs through, from the local logging community here, establishing relationships, getting the business going. We haven't even opened the spade yet. Jeez. Now, when we open up the spade up here, we know we'll get it more than we can handle until we get this mill open. And then when we get it open, we'll be able to probably redistribute some of that timber to some of our other mills, too. So, you know, it's turned out to be a really good project for us. And we're looking forward for your help to kind of check all the boxes here for the fires question.
Okay, council, you got questions?
How many board feed a day is that? Is that thing going to require logs? That stave mill?
I hate that question. Well, I mean... Every, every log's different, and every mill's different.
There's some I can guess, but I don't have a clue.
No, I think on an annual basis, it takes about $4 million foot. And the plant under the cooperage will swallow about $15 million a year for feeding wood.
Talk to me about the oak. How does it compare with other areas or whatever?
This area, you know, where... Yeah, I'll back up with it. There's a, if you read the news articles, the university-type people and those people will tell you, we're running out of trees. We're running out of trees. I had to answer this question for the USDA two months ago. And just so happens that the state of West Virginia redid their wood inventory in 2021. So we have a full inventory by species of everything that's in the state. And we look at Central Appalachia, and I'll come back to that in a second. But there is, there's enough standing white oak in this state to last over 100 years of the current consumption and ours. And if we don't harvest it, it's going to die in rotten forests anyway, so...
The reason I ask that because of the logging effect on the logging community and how much, you know, that would help our logging.
Absolutely.
Wasn't from environmental or whatever.
I get it, but...
It wasn't that. I'm just trying to...
You know, that data is important. That information's important for everybody to understand. We know locally how important it is, and, but, you know, you talk to somebody in Charleston or anywhere else, and they look at you kind of weird. There's the greatest stand of white oak in the world still to this day is Central Appalachia. In France, you can drive a tractor trailer through those national forests and not hit a tree. And that's why they're run by the government now. And, you know, it goes all the way up to Great Lakes, goes all the way down to Arkansas, Missouri, you know, the whole Appalachia, Allegheny Mountains up, that region. But this cluster in the middle is the best conditions. It's a little hard, it's a little steep, you know? But it's the best, it's tight-grain. It's what everybody wants. So we can only use white oak because it's the only one that has tylosees in it. Tylosees is a gummy substance that lives in the medullary rays of white oak, clogs it up. It's like archeolus chlorosis for wood. And off the record, there will be a day when they decide chestnut oak's good enough.
What about red oak? When I was on your, when I was on site, it looked like you had red oak up there, too.
Well, we, on the site, having a log yard's important, especially the local logging community. I'm going to buy every log you bring to me. Obviously, for the mill, I want it in my stave mill if it's good enough. Otherwise, we got to find a market for that. But to do a service to the loggers, just like we do down in Monroe County, we run our own log yard down there. And we have a huge resale business. And I know Cogburn will do it, too. I mean, he's...
It's hardwood and softwood?
Pardon?
Hardwood and softwood.
We don't take a lot of pine, but we have a market for it. I mean, we have a buyer for it. We don't make money on it. We just try not to lose money on it.
But your reforestation plan going forward guarantees that supply of white oak for...
Reforestation is an interesting concept. When we started this project in 2016, I still have a folder on my desk of where I, we were going to buy two saplings for every tree we cut down and plant them in forest. And the first forester I ever ran into, he just laughed out loud at me. He said, "You can plant 100 damn trees in that forest. They'll all die." So, you know, a tree that's, that we harvest is usually between 50 and 80 years old, and it's got about a two-square-mile root system. And when you cut the thing off, there's a lot of energy there, and something will pop up. And I think if we manage forestry, keep invasive species up and just treat it right, it will take care of itself.
Did your operation in White Sulfur Springs, when you started, did you just buy staves to feed that or...
No, we bought the mill in Monroe first.
You did.
Like, September of 2017, we bought the Audrina Mill from Joe and Anna Lusk. It was a sawmill, and then we built a stave mill there. And so we got a lot of practice making them, and we, we sold a lot of wood to Fern Foreman, Jack Daniels. They would buy it tomorrow if I would sell it to them. We use everything we make right now.
Got it.
Your log purchases, is it all contract-only, or do you do open-market purchase from individuals and small companies?
Absolutely. Yeah. Comes in on pickup truck, comes in on a, you know, tandem log truck. Doesn't make a difference to us.
You do, uh, pine, you say?
We have a market for pine. We, we've been working with West Virginia Splitter since before we got bought that mill. So that's one of our primary vendors for that.
They just buy other product to help the logger. They don't use anything else other than white.
I mean, I can't expect the logger, especially this one, coming in with a truckload of white oak only. Much less stave log white oak. That's kind of a different subset of that.
How big is that? What are your products that you're going to run through?
We run, we'll take, we, our sweet spot's like 10 inches to 17 or 18. We can take up to 32 in our mills. We don't like it, but we can.
Good, 10 to 17.
So have you, were you, I did not realize that you were open to all, all types of wood. So when the market gets hot and cold like it does, of course, unfortunately, it's controlled by China.
Right.
So what do you typically do then? Because you're in business to, you know, your, your end product is out of white oak.
Right.
So what happens when those markets get hot and cold? Are you still buying the other?
I have to.
Okay.
I mean, we have, we can't, we can't cherry pick the white oak. Neither, no better than a logger can go out in a tract and just cut white oak. Because guess what he's got to do the rest of the year? Cut everything but white oak. You know, it's, you're cutting your nose off to spite your face.
Let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. One, tell us about the, the, your pool of investors, your platform of investors. Where, where are the, where do these, where did, where did, you know, what, who are these investors?
Well, we have three groups of investment classifications. One's the founders. There was five of us. And then we have the A round. That was, we got an idea. Here's a napkin. Let me show you what it is. And we raised $570,000 on the A round. And that really got us to the point where I could go out and pay for that Marshall study that's in your book because I had done the research. I knew the answers, but they looked at me like, you got to find a consultant that'll tell us that. And I said, there's nobody that does that. But I found somebody that would do it. And then Marshall did a really nice study for us. We paid for that, and we used it as down payment on the mill. Joe and Anna financed it for us. And then I paid them off in three years.
Okay. So you said founders, A round. Is there more than that?
Yep. Then there's the B round. B round was the big round. Those are million-dollar people and, and small groups. And they're, this is really primarily the sporting club community in White Sulfur. Tom Craftrew, my founding partner, and our other managing partner is Tony Alexander. Tom's a very successful architect out of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, has a home in White Sulfur, has lived there, children grew up there. And he's, but his firm's still up in Mechanicsburg. It's a very large architects firm. They do all the cabela's. They did all the West Virginia state prisons when we had to rebuild them all there. He did those. And so they do schools, prisons, and cabela's. And Tony Alexander was the chairman of First Energy. He's a lawyer, accountant, very smart guy, and he's just a good advisory, you know, partner. The B round, who we raised originally 13 and a half, then we raised another four and a half after that in the B round. Ended up about $18 million of equity that we raised in that group. And that's a number of families, individuals, and some groups of individuals. Like, I call them a group of smalls. They have 10 or so guys who get together and put a group together and buy a man to slot. And that's how we formed the ownership group. Our largest single shareholder is a company called Essinko. And some, a guy named Pat Rockman, who passed away unfortunately about a month ago. And he's a, grew up in Clutchburg up here. He's, and he's, has 14 manufacturing plants around the world. Wonderful guy. Really hate losing. He's got two sons that are taking over the business, and they're very, they understood his love and interest in the barrel, and they intend to maintain it.
Okay. Okay, the other question I have that I thought about after we met, and I think about the prospects of, you know, the good things you're going to hope to do here in this county. Workforce. Your numbers are courageous. I'm just curious, how many are you working in over in Greenbrier County?
Oh, it's a plant?
Yeah.
The plant has 119, maybe 126. It varies. They, they, but call it 120. The mill in Monroe County has two shifts, and they're right at 80, give or take. And then in Boone County, it only runs one shift, so that one's right at 40. So this, so this site, we expect, we're going to start with one shift in the month of November. If everything goes well, soon now and then. And then sometime in the spring, early spring, we hope to be able to... sometime in the spring, early spring, we hope to be able to start a second shift.
So, if you could just give me a little idea, because I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm curious more than anything. You've been in business now for a handful of years. What, what, what kind of, um, tenure do you have? I mean, are you, is it, is it, do you find it's still a revolving door with, with your employees?
Well, like any, and I spent forty-five years in the restaurant business, so I know what turnover really is.
There you go, yeah.
In this business, in Monroe, it's all about your leadership, it's all about the manager. We have, out of that core group on the day shift, we still have, I think, twelve original employees, which is almost half of that day shift. And that's because five or six of them went to night shift, because they paid for it. And so, they, they were core staff starting the, the night shift. Boone County has been, um, a little bit more of a challenge. We didn't have the right manager there, you know, and we fixed that. And that's settled down. We got the volume up, we got the quality up, but, um, it just wasn't operating like we needed it to. So, um, we've hired the, who we think will be the manager for this location here. He's a local guy, lives ten minutes from the mill. He worked for AWP for seventeen years. And, um, and we've had the log buyer on the site since, uh, March. And he's a local guy, coaches football team over at Ridgewood, I think. Knows what it's doing, runs a great yard.
Okay, so I called you today requesting financials, and of course, you've got them with you, and you don't want them to be a part of the public record. Could you highlight?
Sure.
And then, um, would you be willing to make those available for our eyes only?
Yeah, if you've got a confidential stamp, you have confidential stamp.
I think our financial assistant knows how to get it offered.
I didn't, I didn't slow down fast enough to stamp these things when I left, so. This year through, January through June, for the first two quarters, our revenue was twenty-seven million, three hundred sixty-five of sales. We had other income of two million dollars. And so, it's a total revenue of twenty-nine, three.
What's your liabilities? What's the company's liabilities with those kind of revenues? What are your liabilities?
So, our assets.
Uh, is this the big company?
This is the barrel company, this is the operating company.
Okay.
Yes.
Are, are, is it all combined, though, your whole operation? Is that, is that, is that all of the operate, all this flow chart, is that all those companies on there?
Yeah, there's only one operating.
So, it's combined financials?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
The, the real estate company runs a separate finance. All of our finances, all of our financials are audited every year by a steward camera. Full audit. Have been since day one. The assets, uh, thirteen point two million for the operating company. This includes none of the equipment or assets or anything, this is just inventory. And then, the liabilities was nine point seven million. The debt schedules for the barrel company, the E, West Virginia EPA, we've used them for right at fifteen million dollars worth of debt. We have two shareholder loans of six point six million and, I don't know, seven point six, seven point six.
So, you still owe the state, what was that dollar amount?
Fifteen.
Okay.
That's two point seven five percent money on ten years. Can't get enough of it.
No kidding?
Yeah. The, um, real estate company, their balance sheet debt is about thirty million dollars. Now, I have to explain it, you have to really understand the new market tax credit scheme to realize that that all goes away after seven years, they forgive it. So, they carry this, I'm gonna call it phantom debt, is what I call it, that, that created these tax credits, that the fangs created. You know, for thirty million, we got eleven million dollars of cash to use. And then, they carry that thirty million at a half a point interest a year. And then, after seven years, the structure implodes. We have a game to deal with at that point. The mills, um, we carry Davis Trust, we refinanced the Audrina Mill when we, when the sawmill burnt down, and we built a brand-new sawmill with the interest money we had. Then, once that got up and running, we refinanced that whole site at five point three million. We have a couple of equipment loans. And the Monroe County one's carrying three point two million in debt.
Is that bank?
Uh, yeah. That is Grant Bank, Grant County, Grant Community, Grant County. The chief financial officer.
Sorry, are you, are your, um, are your investors seeing anything yet from this?
Nope. Well, they've got some glorious tax losses for the first couple of years, for sure. And this year will be the first year we do this.
What would you say your latest balance sheet equity would be as a percentage? Got any guesswork about that?
This is June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three for the barrel. So, total liabilities was nine point seven, and total equity was three and a half.
Three and a half million?
Yeah, and that's the operating company. So, most of that's equity that's been generated through profits out of that, because that's not got any assets in it. It's about, right now, if I throw a mauling bucket, it's about a sixty-three million dollar project so far.
You mean the company? Total. What kind of investment are you looking at here?
This mill here, th, this site will have close to seven million dollars in it. We don't own the land, we don't own the building, we lease that from Tom Coger with the option to purchase it.
So, that's inventories and everything?
Nope, that's just the building. So, all the equipment that we put in is our money, and, um...
That'd be seven million equipment inventory?
Inventory will be about four and a half million on top of that.
Oh, really? So, eleven million dollars you have?
Yeah, that's hard, just hard equipment is seven million.
So, that number you just gave, gave him, that would be your betterments and improvements, and plus your, all your equipment inside the build?
The agreement, the relationship between Appalachian State and Barrel Company is captured in an agreement that the barrel agrees to reimburse the mills for their costs in producing the product for them, and, and an amount on top of that, so that they're profitable. And if the barrel didn't win by, I could sell it all tomorrow. I sell every stave we made with one pump pump the next day.
So, let's do this in lieu of, uh, our schedule here. Let's, uh, let's walk through the document. Counsel, what I'll have you know is that, um, I met with Greg Tucker to produce the document that you actually received in your packet that said draft. And, and then we put that together, of course, I got various information that supplied, um, that document. And then, of course, I met with Phil last week on Wednesday evening. Uh, and, and then, and then, of course, the final document that you have laying before you today is what I'd like to walk through just to... And then, Phil, I have some questions for you.
Okay.
I knew you were traveling today, so in lieu of your travels, I didn't wanna, uh, you know, you're at the wheel, I didn't want to go over all this with you. But counsel, let's just take that document that you got, um, tonight, and let's just walk through it real quick. First part of it's real simple. Uh, city of Somersville lender, Appalachian State West Virginia LLC is the borrower. You read down through those specifics. Uh, of course, the ask is fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of making loan to the borrower under the terms and conditions that may be prescribed by the lender. So, let's get into those loan amount and terms. Subject to the terms and conditions of the agreement, the lender hereby agrees to provide the borrower with a principal sum of fifty thousand for a hundred and twenty months, that's ten years. Interest will accrue, of course, there is no interest. The interest rate as the document accurately reports is zero. Per annum in unpaid balance, should a default occur, repayment of all principal and interest will be made immediately in accordance with the provisions shown below. So, basically, in the event of a, of a default, um, in the event of a default, uh, what we'll be getting back is the principal no interest. Now, what I want to ask you, um, when we talk about the forgiveness of the debt, number two, Phil, the borrower promises to create and maintain a minimum employment levels at Calvin, West Virginia facility, starting, uh, from a base level of thirty-four full-time positions.
Right.
Okay, so when we met, um, you took, you mentioned to me, you got two on-site, and we were gonna add thirty-two new positions. And of course, um, uh, you say that you're, you're, you're hopeful that you'll have them hired even before the end of this calendar year.
We will.
But, but what we're gonna do, um, after looking at this, what we're gonna do is we're gonna change this, uh, thirty-four full-time positions, because as I told you, um, we were gonna audit you, same as we would somebody that we are paying money to, that, that we have to ensure that they're meeting the federal government standards for prevailing wage. We're not doing a prevailing wage audit, we're gonna audit to those same standards, W twos, employees, and gross, gross wages, to ensure that you're living up to what you say you're gonna do here. That audit will happen on an annual basis, so what I'm gonna say, because we're at the end of this year, your first audit will come after your calendar year of twenty twenty-four, which will hold you to the thirty-four full-time positions at the average salary of forty-one, seven, two, two. And then, of course, you've assured me that what we're auditing is the salary, but what you're also doing on top of that is your benefits package.
Correct.
Okay. So, your first audit will come after the calendar year of twenty twenty-four, based on thirty-four FTEs, uh, full-time equivalents, at the average of forty-one, seven, twenty-two. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so then it goes on to say the compensation for the site at the end of twenty twenty-four is thirty-four, what I just said. Now, um, the numbers changed a little bit from when we met to what you've got here in the paper. And, and so, the first thing of it is, is it says, uh, in operations with thirty-four FTEs with payroll of, um, it says, uh, after the first twelve months, you've got the number nine fifty-six in there. That was actually what, um, you were gonna add with the second shift. So, what I had down, recorded numbers, when we broke your employees down and their actual compensation, I had one million, four hundred eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. That was with the, 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 the thirty, the thirty-four. You've got nine hundred and fifty-six.
I took the number, these are, these were the numbers that I had written down as we had our conversation, so.
Okay, so.
I just plugged them in.
Okay.
You had, these were your numbers.
Okay, but, but I think you got them backwards. See, the nine hundred and fifty-six that you're showing after the thirty-four is when you add the additional second shift. Your first shift was one million, four hundred eighteen, five sixty. Follow me?
One million, two eighty-eight, two hundred is the difference.
Okay, the numbers you gave?
Wait, I, I know, one time, comment it, same way you're commenting.
Okay, yeah. Because we had twenty-eight, we had twenty-eight at the starting salary of thirty-nine, five, twenty, and six at fifty-two thousand.
Right.
So, the twenty-eight is one point one oh six, five sixty, and the, the, um, the, the six at fifty-two thousand was three hundred and twelve thousand, bringing it to one point four million and some change.
Yeah, one four eighteen.
Yeah, okay.
You're right.
Okay. Now, the other thing too, the other thing that changed in this document that you produced, you know, when you, when you corrected, when you sent it back to me with your, your changes, when we met, you said after second shift, you were bringing the total numbers to sixty-two FTEs. So, when this document came back, your numbers, your, your total number, your two point two million, forty-five thousand, that reflects what it would be if it was fifty-six. But is the number gonna be with the second shift, fifty-six total employees or sixty-two? Sixty-two is the number you gave me when we met on Wednesday. You said you're gonna add an additional fifteen at the thirty-nine, five, twenty, and seven more at fifty-two thousand.
We also addressed that somewhere else later in here.
So, basically, your first shift is one million, four hundred and eighteen, five sixty. Your second shift adds, if you're still at the number of sixty-two, that would bring you another nine hundred and fifty-six thousand in payroll that we wouldn't audit till the end of the twenty-five year, but it would be a total payroll of two million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars vice this two point two forty-five that you got in the document that you sent back.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that? Okay, so, and then, and then the second shift will be auditable, that, that audit will come at the end of the second full calendar year, which would be those are the numbers that we would be looking at at the end of twenty twenty-five. Okay. I did meet with Councilman Epling today and review this document, and, and he would like the word, um, average salary slash wage, because are you paying them hourly or salary?
We have both. I mean, you're combining two kinds.
Yes, 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 yep, yep. Okay, so let's put, let's put, let's put average salary slash wage.
Just call it wage.
Wage. Average wage.
Compensation.
Jim, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, average wage. Okay, and then, um, when we, when we met, um, we were collateralizing the fire pump system that we're paying for. When we met, you said that that is actually custom-built. What I was more interested in anything was the diesel, the diesel pump.
If it's got a serial number on it, I'll give it to you.
Okay, that's, I, I just, yeah. Is there any way you could find that out before, you know, if we elect to go forward with this? Is there any way we could find out if it's gonna have a serial number?
I'll try to find that out.
And then that way, the document can reflect, even though it's not built yet, that the serial number's coming?
I'll try to find that out.
Okay. Okay, counsel, that's, I, I know you just got, you know, the balance of this document is ditto what you already had previously. Those are the changes in it that, that we met. As I told you before, I kind of pulled that document. As I told you before, I kind of pulled that document together with the city attorney, the previous document that you had. We tweaked that when we actually sat down with Phil last week. So counsel, do you have any other questions about the actual document?
It's going to be 34 full-time.
They have, they have, they have to have 34 on deck by the end of... So auditable for that payroll of the 1.4 million is, is at the end of the calendar year of 2024. At the calendar year of 2025, which he says they're going to do in 2024, they have to add the second shift by the end of the calendar year of 2025 to meet the terms of this loan for a total payroll of $2,374,560. So total, it's going to be 64 total employee, or, I'm sorry, 62 total employees. They have two on deck right now and are currently underway of hiring the 34 new for this year. And you, is, are you still on schedule? As we talked last week, you want to be up and operating in November?
Yes.
Phil, these, sorry, these jobs, the majority of these, I mean, green chain hands, I mean, what's the majority of these? I mean, we're looking $20 an hour average wage. That's what we're looking at with, with that kind of rate, average.
It is, it, there's, there's operator positions, chop saw, debarker, having saw, corning saw, resaws, and then edgers, and then it goes up into grading tables after that. And there's, a third of the people are up on the grading tables. The majority of those people are female usually. And so, they're, because they just got better eyes than the guys.
That being an average, what's your, what's your entry level? You know, entry level, green, say, green chain?
I think we're 19. I kind of leave that in the hands of the.
Manager.
The local guys, but they know what their task is.
Sure. Thank you.
Can I ask?
Absolutely.
Do you have any of these, this forgivable loan is something that's new to us. I think it's council, right? And in this county, probably. Do you have any of these kind of arrangements in any of the other communities that you have mills or whatever?
Support comes in a couple of different ways. This is a novel way. We understand the need for it, kind of story ended with the county, and it came to you guys, it's... We haven't done this before. I mean, the new market tax credit is the closest thing to that type of thing. There's a ridiculous amount of compliance, a ridiculous amount of fees. And we, for that one, I mean, there was, there was millions of dollars of fees packed into that deal, and we took it out of the proceeds day one and just set it aside in an account so that we wouldn't have to worry about paying all those fees. They could just draft it out of that account sitting there. And they do every quarter. And they get a report every quarter, and they're, they're checking their box because the Treasury agent is their inspector. And they're scared of them, so they, they toe the line pretty good.
I learned something this afternoon that I didn't know. Maybe you could just real quick touch on it.
Okay.
Who helped put the package together for the Greenbrier operation?
Who helped put?
Did John Tugel, did you work with Region 4 Planning and Development?
We know John. He, he knows the project. John was involved in the road, the TIF, all the TIF funding that really, and some state money that paid for the road.
Who did the TIF?
He did that. I, that's Tom.
Okay.
That's his bailiwick.
Okay.
He likes the government stuff. And I don't, I handle.
Well, I was told that John Tugel and Region 4 were involved in.
He was.
Your, your bringing your project together in, in Greenbrier County.
Well, mostly, I mean, it was the road. His, his focus was the, the money that the state put in for that road.
Okay.
That's the.
I guess that was a must to be able to put your mill in.
Two feet of asphalt.
What's that?
I've never seen anybody put two feet of asphalt on a road. There's two feet of asphalt on that entire road. You could land a jet on it. I mean, I, I have no idea, but it's, it's, and it's in the flood. The road is in the flood plain, so maybe that had something to do with it.
Okay.
What feels do you most, most about this location? Coming here, coming here.
The timber.
Timber.
Yeah, access to the timber, it gives us... It's important for, all of our competitors are here. You know, Independent State, Speyside, Ron Forman, Robinson. They're all here. They all want to be in the smart. It's important for us to build a moat around our, a little moat of protection. And this site helps check that box. We helped the Hensman Brothers, the Hensman family get started. They have a tiny, tiny, tiny old stadium that I helped them get started about a year or so ago. They're, they're making some staves for us.
Where's that at?
Uh, over near Glendale State, over there, somewhere. I've been there a number of times, but I haven't been over there since they got started. They're still carrying logs from one element to the other in a wheelbarrow. So, but, but they're ending up with some staves, and they're learning what makes a really good state that you get paid for and what one that you don't get paid for is. So they're coming around.
What's critical of the operation of this besides the resource? This operating company?
Just managing it, right? Yeah. Ricky Edwards is my partner in the mills. He is a lifetime forester operator. He ran pits and coals, timber operations, Cumberland's Mills down there in Tennessee and outside of Bristol and St. Paul. He's got a lifetime in this business, so he's a very, he oversees the mill managers.
Okay, any other questions? Couple of things, Bill. One, we'll wait for a motion here from counsel, if it so comes. But as part of our due diligence for the citizens that we represent, the financial piece is a big piece. So I would like to see if you would provide us with your audited financials from last year.
I would.
If we could get a copy of that, and then even a copy of the document that you showed me earlier that your financials through, and I can assure you that they will remain confidential to our transaction. And so at this time, counsel, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, discussion?
I, I would feel more comfortable having seen the financials first. So I'd like to move the table till, till we get that.
Okay.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. So we have a motion on top of the motion. So what we need, what we have is a motion to review the financials. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, now back to the original, the original motion. With the review of the financials and approval of the financials, where do you stand with the, uh, the original motion of approval of the loan agreement? The forgivable loan. Do you want to table it and have another meeting, a special meeting? Or what do you want to do? Do you want, do you want to?
As long as everything checks out, I don't see why we wouldn't. We couldn't vote to approve that, as long as everything moves forward. So to avoid having to.
Avoid having another meeting?
Avoid having another meeting, lack of a better word. Yeah, as long as everything, thing looks good, it would, we would approve anyway. Is that correct?
And I guess what we're going to review from a financial standpoint, I mean, I did get a look at real quick what he's got there. They're all subject to, I mean, you know, like he said, they didn't make any money till September of last year. They just finished their first, what you would say, I guess, from September to Sept- September profitable, of course, you know, as he's represented the debt. So yes, I mean, we can certainly review them. I think we should. I think we have due diligence to do so. If you'd like to join me as part of that review process.
Should have been glad to.
And then, and then if you guys want to make a motion, obviously, if we review them and have concerns, then what we'll do is we'll hold it off until we can meet again. So the motion is with the approval of, uh, the review that will be done by the financials. And quite frankly, I might let somebody else lay their eyes on them as well. Somebody maybe a little bit more, I don't know, maybe, I was trying to think who I, who I might, you know, maybe some local firm or something. We'll, we'll figure it out, Jim. But anyway, if we, after, after review of the financials, we find it that it's warranted, I guess now what I'm asking for is we have a motion on the table to approve the forgivable loan. So all those in favor of this loan agreement.
We made a discussion. I'd like to say something.
Yes.
There's been some concern raised by some people that are familiar with this thing about, you know, us getting into, the city getting into business, loaning money to businesses, because we're really not set up to do that. There's other organizations that do. I think that this particular, and we're going to get that as soon as we put our stamp on this thing, we're going to get a lot of comments from businesses around the area. You know, why don't you loan me some money? Or why don't you give me one of these deals or whatever? That's what we're going to get. Now, I've worked for the development office for a bunch of years. I'm kind of familiar with this, some of these kind of things. And what, the reason I'm going to support this is one of the reasons that the state provides their low-interest financing. And that is because they look at certain types of businesses as being most beneficial to the economy in this state. And now talking about retail or a beauty shop or anything like that, we, we have to have those. But if we can invest and provide incentives for manufacturing is one of them, and that's what this is. If we can provide incentives for manufacturing, then the retail, it'll help the retail and the service and the rest of it.
That's four.
So I am not going to be in favor of, you know, somebody coming for this committee and saying, you know, I need to open up a retail store and, would you help me with the forgivable loan? So I'm going to draw the line on this, you know, because of that, because of the certain targets that the state has. And I agree with that we need to support that kind of thing, and we need to have, develop that kind of a base in this state. So that's the reason I'm going to support this as opposed to... And I don't, I don't think we want to give the impression necessarily we're going to be a haven for forgivable loans for any type, anybody that wants to come through the door. Because I don't think that's going to be where we need to be as a body and as a city of Somersville. If that makes sense.
Yep. So Jim, we met today and had conversation, and, and, um, first thing I want to tell you guys is there's a philanthropic event coming to this area that I am encouraging you all to put on your calendar and attend, because it's going to be kind of a spin on what we've already endured many years ago with this city, when we took a whole group of about 12 people, went down to Greenville, South Carolina, and down into that area. And although I hear what Councilman Epling's saying, and I do not, you know, I don't think that, that this, that this transaction tonight should or will open up the checkbook, because, you know, we have a due diligence in a lot of areas. But I will, I will, just like I shared with Jim today, we took a group of 12 people down to South Carolina. As a matter of fact, you know, we brought things back from that. If you look at the logo system we use in the city, although we might be getting ready to change it, that came out of that, that trip that we took, because we got down there and, and we found out things about logos and so on and so forth. But Greensboro, South, I mean, Greenville, South Carolina reinvented themselves in the culinaries. After the textiles all went overseas, you know, they, they reinvented themselves. And what they did as a city, they had three restaurants downtown. And when we were there visiting, they had 97 restaurants downtown. Three of them were chain. And it's what they did as a city is they put out a loan portfolio package to businesses, and they bought them up to $25,000 worth of kitchen equipment to, to do restaurants. And, and, and through that program, if you ever have the opportunity to visit, I mean, they have absolutely turned that city around. And, and they, they did it primarily with that incentive that they offered $25,000 per business to buy equipment, restaurant equipment, be it tables, chairs, cooking equipment, whatever it was. They reinvented themselves in the culinaries, and now they, they've got a booming economy down there because of a program that the city put out. I do agree with Jim in the sense that we got to figure out going forward, what can we do? And, and, you know, as Jim has a lot of experience in this relatively to the manufacturing and that kind of lending. I, I said to Jim earlier today, and I live by this saying, we have to figure out what we need to do to exist tomorrow. If we continue to be like we were yesterday, there's not going to be a tomorrow. We're going to be like a lot of these other places. I think the city of Somersville, for many reasons, the biggest being our hydro, now being the new sales tax revenue, there are going to be a lot of doors that we need to look at opening up for the future economics of our identity and how we are going to play our cards to make sure that we do our due diligence in a positive, pro-growth way to make sure that we're a contender for tomorrow. And I know Jim's on board with that. And I, and I don't say this because he said just manufacturing, but I think we owe it to the people we represent that we look at everything. And no, we can't be one of these, you know, you know, first of all, we're not going to be a bank. Second of all, we can't start opening the door up that, you know, oh, you're going to have two employees, you know. This right here, what we visited tonight, what we're reviewing tonight, has major economic impact for our area. And the other thing that I say to you too, Phil, is, is I hope, without any reservation, with the diversity of the operation you bring to the table, and we get to be one piece of it, I hope that what we can challenge you to do is buy and shop and do as much local with your company as you can right here in the city of Somersville with this contribution that we make. Because that's what a true partnership's about. And at the end of the day, you know, as, as, you know, you know, Jim, as Jim said to me today, and he's right, he said, this is basically a gift, and it is.
Let me, let me, I'll make the point I left out earlier. When we do these projects, you have major contractors, your electrical contracting, your fire, your building, your... The equipment per se, the state mill equipment, is specialized. It's all custom-made. Down in Bowling Green, Kentucky, we've used the same family for the last four mills we did. But we come into this area and we used local electrical engineer, electrical, electrical contractor from Grexco. We reviewed tradesmen, all local, except for the fire guy. Brewer, Brewer's the only local fire guy we got in West Virginia, and they lost the bid on this one. Big time.
Yeah, and of course, we actually had, I had.
You, you were part, and you saw what happened.
Yep.
So they weren't very happy about it.
Okay. Any other comments, counsel? Jim?
Let me say one. I agree with what you said, you know, because that was a special program to promote retail activity, and they needed that in that area. And I certainly don't throw that in the same category. Neither did West Virginia whenever Cabello's was looking at West. Neither did West Virginia whenever Cabellos was looking at West Virginia. That's not manufacturing, but that's destination tourism also. You know, a lot of economic activity comes from other areas. The, the benefit of this type of business, manufacturing, is that that brings in money from outside the area, which is a big boost to the area. And that's the reason manufacturing's so good. Retail, you kind of get a certain churning in the community, you know, but it's different when you've got new money coming into the community, and that's what manufacturing, distribution, and some of these other targeted kind of industries that the state's interested in brings, so.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. So after a thorough review of the finances, we'll make a decision. Jim and I will. If we can't, it'll, we'll revisit it at the next, at the next city council meeting. And then, of course, if, if after our review, we do make the decision to move forward, we'll let, we'll definitely notify you all immediately that the decision was made, that the financials represented what Phil has said they did, and, and we move forward. Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is second reading of annexation ordinance, annexing 89.710 acres and 26.619 acres, 8.11 acres, more or less, access road number one and access road number two. This is the annexation for the city's recreational complex, 128 acres. Entertained a motion?
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. This was read in, it was read at the last meeting, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. I think that's the only thing I need to. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the 2023-2024 general fund budget revision. And what I'd like to do is just run down through that, council, adding an additional $514,654 to our carry forward, which brings it to $2,321,654. Also, we originally showed state grants at $408,000. We're adding another $1,042,350 grants, and that is the Kentucky Road Stormwater Project to show that, those funds on our, in our financials on our balance statement. The budget, so that's the revenue. Now let's go down the budget, council contributions. Council, I'm asking that in council contributions, this is where we always do it, that we make a contribution to the airport. I'm asking to put $35,000 in the line item with the intention that we'll give the airport $25,000, hang $10,000 in reserve. And I will tell you that there's been a lot of work going on with the airport. We've got the chairman of the airport authority on our council here, Chuck Shaw. I personally have been working lately with Chuck and his board, getting a little bit of speed because now Joe Manchin has picked up the cause and going to hopefully make some good things happen for them relative to getting the contracts signed so they can get their FAA dollars back. And then there's some other great stuff working through Manchin's office with the property itself. So $35,000 total there with the intention that we're only giving 25, leave another 10 in reserve, so if, if needed, we don't have to come back to the well. The economic development piece is what we just discussed tonight, put it in the budget, the 50,000, which would be the funds that would be transferred to the Appalachian State LLC in the event that finances check out. And then, of course, also laying another $50,000 in there unallocated for future things that might come down the road. Data processing, we had a $7,000 original item budget, adding 2,000 for a cyber conference. We're going to send Jason to a national cyber conference in Orlando. City Hall contractual, we had 805,000 laying in there, add another 2,154, and that's just where we put the change after we got all done with the council. It's in putting it in general maintenance. SCTV personnel services, we had an overlap. I will tell you that we, Barney, Barney Benito is no longer with the city. Barney has moved on, and so in lieu of that, we've hired Sam Young, who now is in the interim position of our Somersville CVT, or SCTV directorship. And, and so I'm adding 5,000, and that was an overlap. Barney, of course, was paid out his benefits when he left, and so just some overlap with personnel services there. Also with the new manager of SCTV, there's some equipment purchases that we want to make because we're hopefully going to step up our game from a standpoint of production. So the new interim directors come to me and we've reviewed the current, current equipment status, and I'm adding $10,000, and that's new cameras and microphones. Capital outlay for the police department, we did not have any in there. We did buy a new police vehicle. We bought those with the coal severance monies, and that was a combination of coal severance monies along with the forfeiture count of the police department. They've already bought one vehicle, trying to keep our inventory where we need to fresh and, of course, providing the best we can for the safety and security of our officers out there patrolling. We're going to buy another vehicle, and of course, that's going to be at the price tag of $45,000. That, that, that vehicle also will be rigged out, lights and whatnot, potentially by the forfeiture fund that the, that's in the police department. Street department contractuals, that's where we stick the $1,042,350 for the stormwater project on the Kentucky road. So sticking that with the contractuals, that brings the street department contractuals to $2,31,150. Street department commodities, we're adding 5,000 to their commodities, upgraded leased property. And let me tell you what we're doing, council. Next year, Potato Festival, the carnival will go down to the leased property that we have, the old USAF property. There's some activity that's going to be happening at this end of the town with Camden Clinic and potentially their, actually, they were given monies to build a brand new building down there, office building, which they're going to. And so in lieu of them doing that, they're not, that acts, that parking lot probably will not be accessible to us. The other thing that we need to do is we need to do some, that, that upgrade is actually so that we can get power to the property. So we're going to put in one of those power boxes down on that leased property like we have across the street, so that when we do have the carnival down there, they have access to power. Some things that we kind of discovered this year that we probably should have done a long time ago down there, but it doesn't make sense now to do it down there, we're going to do it at the new property. So that's actually to put the power, do the upgrades we need for Potato Festival next year at the new location for the carnival. Central garage, Joey's contractual, 25,000, just due to inflation and some things that he's bumped up against with higher costs. And of course, our steel contract, it's, it's amazing what some of them cost have been. So I'm adding $5,000 to his budget, bringing his total contractual budget at the central garage to $30,000. Parks and Rec, 35,000 is what's in there. Council, we're going to purchase our first vehicle for the new park. That's going to be a crew cab vehicle. We will be able to utilize that crew cab vehicle in the street department with our summer help until we need it to be able to work in the, at the new property. But we're going to go ahead and start getting some of our capital expenses taken care of for the new park. So we're going to put $55,000 in there to purchase a crew cab truck that its purpose will be for the new recreational park. Also, council, we've got $250,000 in the original budget for the replacement of the gym floor. Actually, that's not all gym floor, there are some other expenses in there as well, but the gym floor anyway came in at 245,000, so we're adding an additional 32,500 for the gym floor replacement. And I will tell you also, we've got some other things underway where it's very apparent that we will not be spending those kind of dollars in, in, in that gym floor replacement. We've kind of come across to something else, and when, when I know it's finalized, we have a meeting coming up here. When I know that's final, I'll come back to you with updated information. But as it is right now, the contract process that we've done our due diligence and due process on, the floor is 245,000, so that allows us to do that floor. But I think I'm going to have better news that it's not going to take that kind of money. The next thing is the arena, the arena personnel services. We currently have 125,000 in there. That pays for the interim director that we have right now, pays for a manager, facilities manager, and also six months' worth, because we're looking at hiring him in January, and it also pays for six months' worth for the cook, for a cook. So we're adding 18,000 to that, to that, bringing it to 143. Now remember, that's one full-time and two, just running for half the year with benefits. And that 18,000 is the, going through the transition from interim to director with the current personnel. And then contingencies, adding 200,000 to the contingency item, line item, we have 50 in there. Remember that 50,000 we set in there because now with the new pool, insurance pool, we're always going to carry a reserve, at least I'll always try to carry a reserve in, in case we would ever be assessed, the maximum assessment that could hit the city of Somersville with their maximum before they got into their reinsurance would be a $12 million assessment to the pool, which our liability of that $12 million would be 40-some thousand dollars. So we're carrying that on our, you know, we'll always carry that in our contingencies in the event that there's ever assessment, we're not at the end of the year having a bill that we can't pay. Okay, so that brings the total increased revenue to $1,557,400. And of course, remember that is with the thousand, or the million 42,350 grant funds. Entertained a motion?
Is approved.
Second. You have a first and a second. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Council, the next item on the agenda is approval of an updated Freedom of Information Act FOIA request form. Mr. Recorder, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. We've had some most recent activity. We've, we've always received FOIA request forms. We recently just had someone that actually did not have one in their, in their possession, and we needed to produce one. When I went back and looked, we had a difficult time finding one, but happened to find one. And one thing that has changed is, and, and all of our close municipalities are now charging a fee for supplies being used, like paper and things of that nature. I felt it was necessary, and the mayor did too, that we approached the council just to let you know that there will be a charge of 50 cents per page on these FOIA requests. We went over the FOIA request. The police department is actually using the exact same one. It just has a different title. I believe it has a logo of the police department on the top of it. So we are really very consistent in our city office with the request, or the FOIA request form. They are, they are identical. They even, they've already started the 50 cents per page. So it's, I, I want to make sure that this council was brought to it since it is a fee that we're going to be charging.
So the reason it's on the agenda, what we'd like to do is make this our official Freedom of Information request, and also make it that the cost for the per page on the document that's been approved by this governing body. So I'll entertain a motion?
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any questions or discussion? And the other thing I will tell you, council, just so it doesn't, it, it's not causation for people to get excited. If you want to see documents and all you want to do is view the documents, you can come to city hall and do that. You don't have to pay for the documents. You're, you're welcome to come. We'll provide the documents. You can view them here, and then you can go about your business. If you want to copy and take those documents with you, that's where the charge comes in. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's appointment of Amy Cook as a Somersville mayor's designee for the Nicholas Intervention Coalition. The mayor has a seat on the coalition, and it's the, the mayor and/or his appointee. I want to thank Lauren Weatherford. She's been serving for me, and now she has chose to step aside. And of course, Amy Cook's going to move in, and Amy herself is well-qualified. Both these young ladies do a whole lot, not just for the coalition, but for the West Virginia Extension Service, and then most importantly, for our community. So I thank both of them for what they do. I'm looking for Amy, looking forward to Amy and her service representing the mayor on the coalition. So it's just an appointment. I just wanted to make it official so it's an official government document that she's been appointed. There's no motion needed. Recorder, report.
One thing, just as a reminder, Monday night will be our next planning and zoning meeting at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chamber.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, council, let me run down some stuff here for you. We have a big community celebration coming this Friday. It's actually from 2:30 to 4:30 downtown Somersville. I want to make it clear here, we're going to shut the street in front of city hall down and the pavilion area, and we're going to shut it down all day because we can't afford for vehicles to get in there that we can't get moved. Joe Manchin is bringing his Fall in Service Heroes ride here in conjunction with the Gold Star Mothers. They're all meeting at the Capitol. They're doing some stuff at the Capitol, and then they're all taking off from there and doing a ride to Somersville. When they get here from 2:30 to 4:30, we're going to have hot dogs, sodas, chips, and ice cream, and also live music. And of course, at 3 o'clock, there will be a presentation. There's going to be some things that Joe Manchin's going to do, presentations to the Gold Star Mothers. I'm actually going to do a resolution recognizing the Gold Mother Celebration that's in our area and the ride, which starts in Nicholas County actually the next day. So this is going to be a combined ride with the Joe Manchin Fall in Service Hero Riders and the Gold Star Mother Riders all here. We are anticipating somewhere between 100 and 200 motorcycles. So I want folks to know that when we get the call from Charleston, if the numbers have grown, there is a good chance that we will shut down Main Street on Friday to be able to take in all the motorcycle riders. Graciously, Nicholas Chronicle and Go Mart have both cooperated with us. We're going to set large ladder trucks on both of their properties and have a big American flag strapped, strapped across Broad Street that the motorcycle riders will all ride, ride through on their way downtown Somersville. So this is a community celebration. It's our opportunity to recognize and honor Gold Star Mothers and the sacrifices that their loved ones have made for our country. So I'm encouraging everybody to come out and be a part of it this Friday, 2:30 to 4:30 downtown Somersville. Then the other thing I'd like to do is Veterans Day. Veterans Day, I was actually contacted by the Nicholas Veterans Coalition, and they have asked very kindly that the city of Somersville take over the Veterans Day Parade, and I have agreed to do so. So going forward, as in the past, the veterans have always handled their own parade, the city of Somersville has taken the responsibilities and duties of the Veterans Day Parade over, and we're handling it. So Veterans Day ceremonies at 11 o'clock on November 11th, Saturday, Veterans Day, at the park, there will be the veterans ceremony at the veterans memorials, at their memorial, at the Veterans Memorial Park. Then lineup for the parade, and it's the regular parade route, just like the Potato Festival route. Lineup is at 12:30, and the parade commences at 1:00 p.m. Excited to say that this year, we've got the Nicholas County High School Band participating, the Ridgewood High School Band participating, and the Somersville Middle School Band participating. So, and we invite any and everybody that wants to put a vehicle or whatever in the parade to come out and support the veterans, get in the parade. So lineup's down at La Rose Shopping Plaza at 12:30. Those are the Veterans Day activities. Trick or treating, both trick or treating and safe zone will be on Halloween this year, Tuesday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's trick or treating in Nicholas County and trick or treating in the city of Somersville. And then also, if there's any businesses out there that want to participate in the safe zone, that happens at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center where the little guys and gals can get through and not have to worry about being out round, outrunning around the neighborhoods, that also takes place the same day at the conference center, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Let's see. Counsel, you need to know, as time is slipping away, believe it or not, here we are in the middle of October almost going into November. November 16th is the Community Thanksgiving Dinner that we serve as a body to the community, and we do it in partnership with the senior center. That meal, that Community Thanksgiving luncheon served by the city council is 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. I know I said that before, but... So counsel, please mark your calendars, and then if you would, please, if you could, sometime between now and then, let DeeDee know if you're intending to help serve that day so we know we have enough servers.
October Fest.
What's that?
October Fest.
Yeah, yep, I'm going to get that. Before I get to Oktoberfest, what I want to also tell you is Brown Oaks, in the spirit of their 100th year celebration, this month's activity is Ghost Stories and Hot Chocolate. That is Saturday, October 21st at 7:00 PM. So again, encourage you to get out and support Brown Oaks and the Board of Directors and all the good things that they've made happen this year. As the year's winding down, they have their October event, the 21st, Ghost Stories and Hot Chocolate. That ought to be interesting. Then downtown Somersville on October 28th, glad to have back the Second Annual Oktoberfest, this year called Spooktoberfest, 1:00 to 6:00 PM, great lineup of music, got Oliver Steele coming, Nick Davison, Joe Simpson, and Aaron Beam and the Do Gooders. Folks, this is a great, I mean, guys, anybody out there listening, put it in the paper, every brewing company in the state of West Virginia is invited to this. And last year, they had well over 50 different beers that a person could take sample. So that's back again this year, October 28th, 1:00 to 6:00 PM, it's on a Saturday. Also, the October, October has got a lot of stuff going, October 28th and 29th, the Somersville Arena and Conference Center is going to be hosting the Marshall Fishing Cup. Of course, the actual fishing tournament takes place at Somersville Lake, is actually being launched in Summer Salmon Run, but they're going to do the weigh-ins and have a swap meet and vendors and weigh-ins, and all that will take place inside the Somersville Arena and Conference Center. Again, it's the Marshall, 2023 Marshall Fishing Cup, and it's kind of neat too, that this is being in conjunction to also support not only the Marshall Fishing Cup, but I did not know, we have a Nicholas County High School fishing team. And so they're working in conjunction, and the funds that they make out of this tournament will also go to support the Nicholas County High School fishing team. So I think that's a neat deal too. Let me see if I've covered everything here. One last thing, let me see, I hope I have that on my list here because I just remembered. We also have Jeep Fest, or I guess they don't even call it Jeep Fest, they call it Four-Wheel Off-Road is what they call it. And I believe that that is, I'm going to mess up here, I don't remember. October, October 21st. October 21st, thank you, Steve, yes. And, and that's the, out at the Good Evening Ranch, another great event. They encourage you to bring anything you want to ride off-road and go on the off-road courses out there with them. Big gathering, great organization, and again, it's something that helps our local economy. They bring them in from all over the state, and of course, it's a bunch of local guys that actually head that up and running. So again, want to encourage people to get out there and take place. What's it called, Steve, the off-road?
Still called West Virginia Jeep Fest.
Yeah, okay, West Virginia, okay. And you guys are sponsors.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it is Jeep Fest, yeah.
One of the many sponsors that are here, and they, not only in the state of West Virginia, we get some around these states, and come from as far as Georgia.
And you don't have to have a Jeep to come.
You don't have to have a Jeep to come in.
There you go.
They're supposed to size, any type of recreational vehicle.
So a lot going on. So, hey, but just important, just remember this Friday, the event taking place downtown, and it could be hectic, we're going to do the best we can to manage the crowd, so. That concludes the mayor's report. Any counsel reports? Okay, we do not need an executive session tonight, so what I'll do is I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The first and the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, counsel, have a good evening.